Yes.
Yes.
Becker.
Yes.
Sauer.
Yes.
McBain.
Yes.
Challenger.
Yes.
Ordinance number fourteen dash oh dash two seven seven eight, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the termination of a certain utility line easement in consideration of the grant of an alternative utility line easement.
So.
Second.
Ian.
Simpson.
Yes.
Becker.
Yes.
Sauer.
Yes.
McBain.
Yes.
Schoninger.
Yes.
Challenger.
Yes.
Ordinance number fourteen dash oh dash two seven seven nine, first reading. An ordinance for the allowance for use of personal vehicles on city business and reviewing ordinances in conflict here with.
So.
Second.
A little more explanation.
This is just the lineup of the state of Ohio's recognition of reimbursement with the private.
Okay.
We usually have to do it like every year and make all these changes, but if we just say we're doing what the state of Ohio is doing, it's going to be like.
That's in line with usually what the point five five.
Well, right now it's, well, the federal is point five six and the state is point five two. We are currently paying point four five, which was the state rate probably about a year ago, which has been updated. They do update, the state updates their mileage quarterly, every quarter, but it hasn't changed in like the last three or four quarters. So it's just something I call it, the mileage rate. If they go up and we can spell it, change it from here to mine with the state.
Does this change things to blanket so that anyone who uses a personal vehicle?
No.
No, it's just the rate.
Just the rate.
Yeah. Rather than having to do an ordinance every time the rate changes, it's covered, whatever the state rate is, that's what we would use.
Never follow any of those.
Ian.
Becker.
Yes.
Sauer.
Yes.
McBain.
Yes.
Schoninger.
Yes.
Challenger. Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance number fourteen dash oh dash two seven eight zero, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with professional electric products company, Peptico, three seven two nine Butler Oaks, Brown, Green, Ohio, four four two three two, for the purchase of a single-phase overhead pad mount, three-phase pad mount, and single-phase step-down distribution transporters on an as-needed basis for the city of Columbia Electric Department. Some move.
Second.
Any comments? Ian.
Sauer.
Yes.
McBain.
Yes.
Schoninger.
Yes.
Challenger. Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Becker.
Yes.
Next on the agenda, two executive sessions before, is there any action afterwards? Is there any comments now then? Are there anything else to comment?
I was wondering, the gentleman who were here with the seat base and we didn't have many questions to ask, and we didn't have much conversation about it. What's the feeling? And when we sat here, did you got it or?
Well, I can tell you a little bit, you know, going into it, I know that the chamber was a big part of this, you know, they had him speak and I believe that he really went to see the first presentation and then last Tuesday he spoke again. And I did not get to see it either of us, but I did what, I did go to see him today. I'm not in today. My four main concerns were the man hours, what, you know, how tech savvy is city hall going to have to become to, you know, operate this? And how many man hours am I going to have to put towards this, you know, we're going to have to have a GIS person? And he answered both those questions. We're not going to be very tech savvy or operate that. The order, the man hours, we're not going to be, you know, populating that website ourselves and I think it's a very good price. So those are my two main, well, my other question was the cost, but I kind of already knew that. I couldn't leak on any of that or anything. And then the last thing that I had a concern was the water in the sewer. I didn't want a company from North Dakota designing a building off of our water and sewer, you know, just from the website. But before I could even bring that up, they had a little disclaimer on it, the same Salem. So they definitely answered all my questions.
What kind of rate, the cost standpoint there is from being absent split cost or?
Yeah, it would be, I think that, you know, I think the chamber might, might, you know, want to donate something, but we would, you know, township's going to be involved, you know, so it would be some type of split with us probably taking the part.
I would like you to proceed with it. I don't know how the other people feel.
Any discussions with the chamber or?
Come back with a proposal of the cost and who's going to pay for it?
Very good.
Because I really liked it. I thought it was impressive.
I think anyone who does it, they get.
They're left behind.
It's so user-friendly, the way he was doing it. He's good at it.
It's not hard.
It's not played on the world.
It's not hard. This guy must be pretty good at rating.
It's crazy that the tools that we provide also, I mean, they still open up their codes and anyone has free access to that.
Eric, if nothing else, I'll talk to Bob about updating the filing back in the back of the planning book. It looks exactly the same as it did back in nineteen seventy-three. Quite often I look at it and say, now where does this start and how it stops? At least while there I could go and get my answer. Quickly.
With a little disclaimer once, yeah.
Do we need a motion to, for you to proceed or can it is proceed?
They're going to proceed.
You're trying to ask the first officer what the?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll get hold of them and.
Does he present this to township?
Uh, no, not that I'm aware of. I think that idea just, you know, that idea just come about basically the township idea. I think that was like the last two.
The other part of the briefing is me, they suggested they may like to include properties available for sale or rental or whatever that needed, like a few township that was a lot of problems to do that. But it wasn't, it wasn't agreed to. They were just asking if that was possible, if that is something like.
And the chamber commerce, you know, their concern was this, basically they had the same concern we did, you know, compared. He asked, he's, who's going to run this?
Under council comments, Dick and I were visiting. I think in the history of Columbia, this is the first time in July and August that we didn't have a emergency meeting. Just had the one meeting for council. So I want to commend Mike Lance. They must be doing a good job. We didn't have to call special meetings.
Floyd, the timeline.
Yeah.
I have one quick comment. I don't know how many of you are going to assume the way it's going around the area and the country that is ALS, this ice bucket challenge. Yesterday, a buddy of mine that I graduated high school with done a non, not done an email and said, you're in. And so I get when they do this, for anyone that doesn't know, they're trying to raise awareness, not only for ALS, new gary disease, but also to raise money and just draw attention to it. So I figured that oftentimes we draw attention to ourselves in negative ways or probably I thought this might be a good way to draw attention to the fact that we can work together for good causes. And so I brought this ice bucket tonight. And afterwards, I'm going to accept the challenge. And when you do this, you're supposed to invite three other people to also do it. And I figure that there's two other past mayors sitting up here. And you start this conversation, do we want to do that? Especially when I've been looking on the web and seeing all these people doing this and say, what's the matter with these folks? That's part. You don't have to do it. The other way that you can do it is just give a hundred dollars on the website. So it'd be pretty easy if I had it. So I figured I would ask the two of you and Lance. And I figured that from a community standpoint, we have, reach out to others within the community. It'll help spread it around a little bit. And.
Which a hundred dollars do more good for them to spend.
I suppose we have a hundred bucks.
So they said that in the last year, they raised a couple million dollars. They raised fifteen million dollars in the last two weeks. So if I'm not looking forward to the cold war, I figure.
Do we get?
Yes, that's why I brought, I need one of you guys. You're like a one ice bucket. Well, this is mine. You said I have three of your own.
You've got a signed metal release there.
There's your hundred bucks, buddy. I'll have it happen to you. So that's it. But I figured when the meeting's over, like, well, if you can hit me in the parking lot, it's impressive. Who are we going to execute?
There's a lot of water in that one. It's full.
If I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. Give the corn stuff. Rice and water.
I'm working on this. I have to do it.
I just got yesterday, like four days of lunch in the middle of the day. So we need a motion to, or second?
I'll second.
McBain.
Yes.
Schoninger.
Yes.
Challenger.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Becker.
Yes.
Sauer.
Yes.
Mayor should okay you off the state of the picture.
Not many people can work.
Did you send it through?
Who can read this?
We've got to try this in first. All we got to do is. The chamber's people are all. If anyone wants to see, I have to go to the media and see if I can come up. I told him what you said. I said, just open my doors to see if I could, if I can say that.
Yeah, we have a timeline. Hopefully they have a timeline. I don't know.
Uh, yes. This is what's in my.
Yeah, a lot of.
Sure. No, I'm. I hear you, Selena. I don't care. I know I haven't.
So you do.
I have money for the, for the. I just want to give this back to you guys.
Well, I'm not looking for.
Now, is that just for ALS?
It's called, it's called. New gary, new gary diseases.
Okay.
The way they're doing this is specifically, I mean, it started.
You're going to take it ice?
We're not taking, I'm not letting you take this. You're not letting me take it. Why is that? Just because I'm the second oldest guy up there, that don't mean anything. In my seventies here, but you're a little ahead of me.
Yeah. And that's what I was.
That's what I had you figure. If you let me work. And we're still pretty tough.
It's just as good.
Not as tough as we used to be, but we're still pretty tough. But. Five minutes of a walk is enough and we'll be okay.
You're really not staying. I mean, you know, tough weather last year. People could get salt. February. It's just the state with the state. That is the same. As I said, the first time the state's not a bid, nobody, the entire state.
They're all.
Usually the salt. Not that many. So. Probably unsure. I don't quote you. I don't know if they're short or they won't come out. So when the state put out the bid, these are what the numbers came back.
Who are you?
I said some of the counties didn't get any bids. But see, when the, I think when the state puts out a bid, that might be a district. There's eleven or twelve districts in the state of Ohio. Iris is a district with eleven and headquartered in. And so for us, district eleven, Columbia County, so for us, so that, that, that's. It, it, I'm unsure, because I haven't seen all of it. It, some of the counties might be different within the district. Because I think Jefferson was going out of the house. But that's what it came back as. What we. That's what the bid came back from. I don't know. I'm not sure if they said the bid.
So basically what we got on it first is kind of what lost it.
No, but it might have been only one bidder. Because the first time they didn't have any bids. So it could have came back, but only, only one, this one company bid. And that's the price you paid. Because it's almost.
Everybody was like gunshot. It was this shortage.
Either that and they may not have known maybe what, what to face them. I mean, it's, this is, this is crazy. We never saw salt go up.
How much you qualify?
Triple. We were paying thirty-seven, thirty-seven something a ton last year. And this year the bid is a hundred and two dollars. Now, you could get more. Lance probably has more than that.
Hundred and.
Hundred and two dollars per ton. So that would triple our costs for salt. Thing about the salt, see, all the communities go in with the state because they normally get a better price because they, they're buying in large quantities. Thing about salt, never know how much you're going to need. You know, last year it was a bad one. They were needing a lot of salt. Year before that was mild winter, so everybody had stockpiles. They didn't, they didn't.
So does it say you have an option? Any guys have an option of getting it somewhere else though or?
Well, that's what Lance spoke into me, but it's just, you know, it's not, there's not many companies, I would think, that really deal with that. So.
What's the deadline?
And he said he has to contact.
This is obviously your angle. So you're purchasing or?
And what you have to do, you have to commit. And when you, when you send in that you're going to go with the salt project through the state, you have to commit to so many times. Now, the state will let you go, I think, ten percent either way. If it's ten percent less, if you need more, you can purchase ten percent more at that price. So if, you know, that's what you're committed to.
A layup that you guys need six hundred tons of.
That's what we put, that's what we put in. Now, see, we did purchase some this summer. This was another program they did this year, just this year, where they did a summer contract and then they did a fall contract, a winter contract. So we did purchase some in the summer.
How much?
I probably only went over two hundred tons because our salt bins only hold so much. I'm thinking that they hold two hundred tons a month. So you can't buy a bunch of it now. You can't buy a bunch of it now in the summertime because we have nowhere to store. We only store so much.
Are you going to store it? Like you can get it for one or?
Well, we use it. As it's.
Oh, duh.
As it's used, we replenish it. Yeah. As it's used, you know, Jesse will maybe let it run down to fifty tons and then put an order in. And then, you know, we usually get the order within a week.
Okay.
Couple things to a week. And so he keeps enough on supply and then, you know, get replenished.
Um, did, oh shit. I was going, I was kind of lying. I forgot. That letter from Nick Barlerak and a letter from the chamber supporting the seat base.
I have to see it through Rebecca's desk. I don't have the next one. At least get the other one. There may be on, maybe on Rebecca's desk. She usually keeps, she keeps a copy on hand for everything that she's sending.
It's cold.
Company check on her desk.
Who's the other one you ordered? Chris won't do it. Nick Barlerak.
The, I was from the chamber supporting that interactive map.
The thing was a letter. It was a letter?
Yes, I know it was a letter. I thought.
I didn't see anything in there from the chamber.
Okay.
Was it, did Brian, did he say that he had just received that today or something? Is that the one that he sent?
It's on your film. I don't, you know, I'm not going to say it to the chamber. I mean, I know he's in the chamber. Obviously asking up here, so.
Now, see, let's see. One for Grace.
They approved that, those requests, right?
For?
The.
They, they approved the one for the tag day and they didn't have to do the one for for the die. But it's.
What was that? What, what did that church say? I didn't really understand that. Is that, you said that letters there?
Grace?
Did that do with that zone?
No, no, they're just observing your two hundred here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. If you don't mind, I'm sorry.
Well, you're not sticking around either.
No.
Anytime.
No. I'll have to do those things for I think it's a later, but I'll stop that.
We've got the numbers. So we need a call.
We've got the numbers. So give me a call if you're...
All right. We went to that house. Thank you.
I thought it was going to have to be.
Yeah, there is. You should wait until I hear a click and then it'll send it out.
We can do that.
Are you staying in the hotel?
Yeah, I'm waiting for the excitement.
You're dedicated. I nominate you to sit up there with us. No? That's the guy. I broke my microphone.
Well, I'm going to use that bigger playing commission and you have a clip on the wrong side. Because it's, it's set for a girl.
I'm for a tandem choose. It could be different than I do.
That's, that's a tough part.
That's why it's wrong when I put it on the playing commission, because Lance has it as a... Now I know.
You don't have to watch me get soaked.
But you don't have to.
No mouth to mouth. One time for sustenance.
Today's off your back.
Now, if we're going to do this, you're all going home with me.
Well, you don't have to do it tonight. You have 24 hours.
You can, you can share, you can share half with me.
That would be the thing to do.
The wrath that you're going to go through, you're, you're going home with me, all of you.
Okay.
If A W I saw me, you're all going home with me.
I'm paying, I'm paying $500 and you're $100 too. Enough doing.
Come on!
Shalnaker?
Yes.
Challenger?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Drucker?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Dickbain?
Yes.
I'd like to say that, that the move of the minutes reflect that this council sends their, condolences to the Doc Pritchard's family. We, uh, have served on council with him, truly enjoyed his, his time with us, and we will miss him, all of us. I put that in motion.
I'll second that.
You know, three of us up here separately. Even though, even though Doc said many a time, "You don't have to follow this book."
He's following sense.
He hated the book. He said, "Just let them do what they want to do."
That's right.
I don't like that.
Doc, you gotta follow the book. Why?
You need to raise money that way.
Again, like I said, mine appears.
Jason called and he doesn't have a shot.
But you're going home with me to take care of the wrath on top of it.
Come on, man.